Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order our meeting, the City Council meeting for November the 18th, 2019. Welcome. Glad to see we've got a packed house. Now, I'm going to ask Mr. Green here to lead us in order for you.
Good morning. Thank you for another beautiful day. Help us here to make the right decisions for the city. Be with the people that are representing you and their families, Lord. Keep them safe, help them have a good Thanksgiving, be with all our first responders and our troops. Again, with our citizens here tonight. And thank you again, Lord. Amen.
Thanks for joining us.
Ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for the night?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Need to add a couple of things.
Could you tell me what they are?
The, having the agenda and the agenda packet and the minutes that may approval ready Wednesday before the meeting.
They've been on.
I mean, I just want to put that on our first to vote on. Make it a, let me roll.
I don't think it's on.
Well, just put it on. Eight hours. Discuss. And vote to have the agenda, everything that goes with it ready Wednesday before.
Have we been doing that? Is that already?
It's always been ready, but it's not in the binders until the day we ended it.
Is that something? Are we, have you done your research? Are we already, is this a rule that's already in place? Or are you just trying to?
We need the information before we get to the meeting and start talking.
Well, I understand that, and it's ready.
It wasn't ready. I kind of got an agenda, but there was nothing with it.
Well, I sent the agenda out, like via email, but everything is already in the office and printed. I just don't put it in the binders. Like, I put it in the binder today, but all of the stuff that's in here has been out and printed in the, a thing in the office.
We need to have it before we pick up the agenda, so, I mean, we just need to vote on it.
We're just putting it on, and we can vote.
Is that something that we vote on, Jay? Do administrative things like that?
That's up to y'all. I mean, y'all just direct the person preparing the.
That's what I thought. I mean, if you just asked, we would definitely do it.
The person agrees to do it.
It's a conversation.
It's up to you.
No, I mean, it doesn't matter to me. Do y'all want a copy of it to go out during the week and another copy of it in the binder? Or do you want it in your binder, and then you take the binder and bring it back for the meeting?
We just need it on Wednesday before we read over it.
Yeah, we, we don't have the time to read over everything and try to vote on anything else on that. It's too much to try to go over in two minutes.
No, I mean, I get what you're saying. I'm just asking, do you want to choose out the copy that, do you want one copy later in the week and then a copy that's in here? Or do you want everything in here and then you take it from that?
Yeah, like anything, we'll vote on it. Just whatever you put on like that.
Yeah, I mean, it, like I said, it's not a big deal. It's already in there. So, it's just send it out.
There's a way to do that online, but it might take special software. I know a couple of different cities have it all.
Well, some of it, I mean, you could scan it and then just email it out. It doesn't matter to me.
Much respect.
Discuss the fence violations and try to come up with some kind of resolution. We've talked about it for months. Just like that. How you doing, Jay?
Hold on. Do we have to do that, have that tonight, or can it be next month?
Um, need to add stuff that wasn't given to the press and advances. Supposed to be an emergency or an urgent matter, I don't know.
This is, I don't know, I won't go into fighting for how many months now?
Well, it's not an emergency, and you're, according to the sunshine law, you should be putting this stuff on there before you, if you, if you want to figure, pack it up on Wednesday, and you should have known you were adding this by Wednesday, right?
Yes.
So, I would, I would like to add it for our next meeting. What we'll do is we'll get a copy of the violations that are in town. That way we know what we're talking about. Get a copy of the violations, and we can review them. Okay? And then our ordinance, what our ordinance states. So, and with respect to that, we are sending out two letters this week on the fences.
There'll be more than two.
Is there more than two?
If you don't care, go ahead and explain the allegations about corruption at City and City House.
Excuse me?
The allegations about the corruption at City and City House, and if it's on your banners out here.
That's not my banner, David.
Was you not there?
No, I did not. I didn't have anything to do with that, and I want everybody here to understand that. That banner did not have anything to do with me. I didn't, my name wasn't on it. It says, "Support our layer." Yes, my name wasn't on it.
You're the layer.
I'm the layer, but I didn't put it out there.
Says, "Support our layer."
I had, so if you'd have put. Why don't you say something real fast? I had to call her and tell her what it said, because it needed to come down.
You sat down there all day and didn't know it was on there?
It was on the side of the fence that if you drive by coming down from my house. That's when I saw it. That I did call her and tell her.
I just appreciate the allegations about corruption.
I agree with you. Honestly, I called and told her Wednesday.
Well, I don't appreciate being, if you had wrong, pick that phone up and call me. I mean, it's a conversation. I could have told you then that I didn't know anything about it.
It's hard to believe you sat there all day and didn't know it was on there.
Where was I sitting at?
It's apart. Was you not there?
No!
Not around it.
No, you were there whenever they had the cookout.
Oh, I did go to the cookout, and if you'd have had one, I'd have went for yours, too. But I did not read that sign, and I did not see it.
Okay.
So, now we can move on. Anything else?
I should take care of that.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment.
Okay. That's fine. All in favor? You know it. Thank you. So, I would, I was to discuss the.
Agenda and the packet being ready by Wednesday.
Discuss and put on that, yeah, the other ones there.
And, um, a copy of the minutes that may approval.
Yeah, I'll just go pretty much everything. You didn't, just anything that's in there.
Yeah.
All right. Approval of the minutes for October the 7th, 2019. Can I get a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
I'll say it. I ain't had the chance to look at it yet.
Next is I finish business. I'm paying on Pickens Street Park.
And this was just the invoice for the, the park design. It was up there, but it's a SPOSS check that would have to go out, so I'm sure everybody's on the same page and boards paid.
I met with Jerry Cooper on Friday. James and I had to speak with him about partnering with us on a couple of projects here in Nelson, and they were more than happy to do it. Kennesaw Avenue project being one of them, and Pickens Street project being another one. He had some good ideas on ways to save us money. Pickens Street project, he suggested, he's got a parks planner that will actually, the project manager will actually take a look at it and then piece that one out. So, you would do your court, your paving separately, and then a pavilion if you decided that you wanted to put a pavilion up there right now, and if not, the landscaping. So, he said all those would, could be done, and he said you'd save money if you didn't hire a contractor to sub, to provide or sub contractors. So, and they have a parks planner that'd be more willing to help us.
So, he's going to put this one together for just the basketball court?
He's going to put everything together for that, for that project up there, and then, and then how to lay it out, and how to bid it, and so forth. So, it's done right, and to have it looked at by their folks and workers, because it's going to be over $100,000, and there's, it's different when you spend SPOSS money versus city money.
Didn't you say we could do it in two phases and save money?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I thought we was just going to write in the basketball court. I didn't know we was going to go into all of this stuff.
Well, we have, we have an approved capital improvement plan, and we have three years of backlog. So, if you're going to do a project up there, why not do the whole project versus just piecing it out?
Do what we need, really what we need to do.
You need to finish up our capital improvement plan. We're three cycles behind. That's what we really need to do. I mean, I know that I heard things saying, oh, we can roll it over, and we can roll it over. You can't do that, but any citizen out here could put a lawsuit against you. You know, I don't want that.
We won't give it back to the citizens as far as I'm concerned.
Well, you can't do that.
We don't make $300,000 up on that one.
It's not $300,000.
$270,000 plus the 10%.
That's what Michael Kidd, that's what Michael Kidd said was, that was his price. That's not what Cherokee said that they could do it for. So, and they're going to get numbers and put everything together.
We looking down.
So, what are we paying for the 1,600 right here?
We break it down.
That design, they ain't come up with on it?
That's your design. It's partly, you have to have that when you do a SPOSS project. It's part of your, it's part of your requirements.
We looking at, I ain't for spending up $200,000 or something like that.
It's not your money, David, and it's already been approved.
Okay, we will.
So, Jeff, can you help here? So, SPOSS money, that's already been approved. We have, we have a SPOSS, a capital improvement program that has already been approved.
It's not in detail approved for that park, though.
It, you have pieces of that project for that park, and it is approved.
The basketball court.
It's the half basketball court up here and the paving that goes along with it.
Well, the reason you do this capital improvement plan is to say, here's what we're going to do with our SPOSS money, and you're required to have one.
Exactly.
When it comes to the expenditure, obviously, you have to vote on the expenditures from that SPOSS money as well.
Exactly. So, if you, but if you've got an approved, if you've got an approved capital improvement plan.
Your idea is to fulfill it.
Exactly. Well, your obligation is to fulfill it, according to Kelo.
You can change things as you go. That's your plan. You got to say, here's what we're going to do with the money. You can change your plans if you want to change your plans, but obviously, you don't want to backload the SPOSS money forever.
But at what point did we agree to spend $270,000?
David, I don't, I don't think anybody agreed to spend $270,000. I think I just told you that I was going to get prices together from Cherokee, which would be a lot better than what he said.
Most.
Did I, did I not say that?
When the invoice came in, I think everybody talked about it. She said it was too high, and he said, I think we all agreed it was too high. So, when they went to me.
We can look at that, but that don't mean we're going to have to spend that up there.
No, I think that's a lot, that's way too much.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think, even when it came up, I said it was too much.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not.
I think we were all kind of stunned by that.
We can't even put a bathroom up there either, can we?
I don't know if you can put a bathroom up there at all, to be honest with you. You probably don't have enough, you probably don't have enough space to put your.
Subjects.
Subjects, I don't feel one, because all you would really have would be behind the, the tower, the water tower. So, all right. Any other questions on Pickens Street?
Is there something on the, uh?
No, you don't.
I don't know, babe.
Please. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for October the 7th?
Motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Okay. All in favor? Can I get a motion to approve the October 22nd minutes, please?
Motion to approve.
I'll say it.
All in favor? You know it. Thank you. Okay. Department of Public Police report. Lieutenant Simmons, deputy guard, come deliver your Cherokee County.
Quick, I've got to get this in a living here. Pretty good month, actually. We had 11 calls. Biggies were, we responded to several calls for assistance on white marble web, and then were criminal inmates, who were, it's more like they were backing up EMS and so forth. Deputy Garland responded to city call after hour for to speak to the neighbors. One domestic, it was noncriminal, and one domestic, it was stranded motorist and suspicious vehicle that were going to horse solicitors. One of them had an outstanding warrant from another jurisdiction, was arrested. They were hitting neighborhoods, starting in Ball Ground and working their way here to Nelson. The folks in Ball Ground decided to get on social media, said it's not on number one. Folks in Nelson got on and called number one. Figure out which way it got resolved quicker.
Any questions?
If I have to get up and run, I'm just going to get up and run.
I was going to tell you that David had a chance to speak with Jerry Cooper, and he said that he's going to get a study for, he's going to work to get us a study down here for the on and off ramp at 575.
Jerry Cooper might be able to get something done where I couldn't.
Yeah, we talked about it. He says he would go ahead and have his people pull a, an accident report and such and such and stuff like that.
Excellent.
That's what I thought.
He'll be able to help.
All right. I ask you about it every month, so I want to.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor's report. Someone skip that tonight. Let's go straight to finance report. So, we have anything?
I just, I have, hang on. The council approval report is there since the last meeting, and there's a copy of the statement of revenue and expenditures. I don't have the account balances and stuff. That's what's happening on my house. So, I just want to show them where everything sits.
Hopefully, it'll be back to normal.
Yes.
Thanks, please.
Yeah.
Body review, these have signed off on.
These are the same ones that we have, we have the same ones. And that's what I just, I'm going to chat over there, is the account numbers and balances and stuff.
On page two, that debit card transaction stuff is bottom of the page.
That's not in here. That was stuff that we gave you all for the bank statements. The stuff that's in, is the council through report and the revenues and expenditures. If you show it to me afterwards, I can pull that, um, stuff from there and still.
Yeah, because it's not in here. I don't see that sign. I think they, they want to be, but they're not in the binder.
No, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, because it's not in here. I don't see that sign. I think they, they want to be, but they're not in the binder. Any questions? Anything else? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment?
Motion to approve.
Okay. That's fine. All in favor? You know it. Thank you. So, I would, I was to discuss the.
Agenda and the packet being ready by Wednesday.
Discuss and put on that, yeah, the other ones there.
And, um, a copy of the statement of revenue and expenditures. Discuss.
If you want. Any questions?
No, I don't know. I don't know.
Any questions?
No.
Next is I finish business. I'm paying on Pickens Street Park.
And this was just the invoice for the, the park design. It was up there, but it's a SPOSS check that would have to go out, so I'm making sure everybody's on the same page and boards paid.
I met with Jerry Cooper on Friday. James and I had to speak with him about partnering with us on a couple of projects here in Nelson, and they were more than happy to do it. Kennesaw Avenue project being one of them, and Pickens Street project being another one. He had some good ideas on ways to save us money. Pickens Street project, he suggested, he's got a parks planner that will actually, the project manager will actually take a look at it and then piece that one out. So, you would do your court, your paving separately, and then a pavilion if you decided that you wanted to put a pavilion up there right now, and if not, the landscaping. So, he said all those would, could be done, and he said you'd save money if you didn't hire a contractor to sub, to provide or sub contractors. So, and they have a parks planner that'd be more willing to help us.
So, he's going to put this one together for just the basketball court?
He's going to put everything together for that, for that project up there, and then, and then how to lay it out, and how to bid it, and so forth. So, it's done right, and to have it looked at by their folks and workers, because it's going to be over $100,000, and there's, it's different when you spend SPOSS money versus city money.
Didn't you say we could do it in two phases and save money?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I mean, I thought we was just going to write in the basketball court. I didn't know we was going to go into all of this stuff. That's what we had talked about for the last several years.
We have a, we have an approved capital improvement plan, and we have three years of backlog. So, if you're going to do a project up there, why not do the whole project versus just piecing it out?
Do what we need, really what we need to do.
You need to finish up our capital improvement plan. We're three cycles behind. That's what we really need to do. I mean, I know that I heard things saying, oh, we can roll it over, and we can roll it over. You can't do that, but any citizen out here could put a lawsuit against you. You know, I don't want that.
We won't give it back to the citizens as far as I'm concerned.
Well, you can't do that.
We don't make $300,000 up on that one.
It's not $300,000.
$270,000 plus the 10%.
That's what Michael Kidd, that's what Michael Kidd said was, that was his price. That's not what Cherokee said that they could do it for. So, and they're going to get numbers and put everything together.
We looking down.
So, what are we paying for the 1,600 right here?
We break it down.
That design, they ain't come up with on it?
That's your design. It's partly, you have to have that when you do a SPOSS project. It's part of your, it's part of your requirements.
We looking at, I ain't for spending up $200,000 or something like that.
It's not your money, David, and it's already been approved.
Okay, we will.
So, Jeff, can you help here? So, SPOSS money, that's already been approved. We have, we have a SPOSS, a capital improvement program that has already been approved.
It's not in detail approved for that park, though.
It, you have pieces of that project for that park, and it is approved.
The basketball court.
It's the half basketball court up here and the paving that goes along with it.
Well, the reason you do this capital improvement plan is to say, here's what we're going to do with our SPOSS money, and you're required to have one.
Exactly.
When it comes to the expenditure, obviously, you have to vote on the expenditures from that SPOSS money as well.
Exactly. So, if you, but if you've got an approved, if you've got an approved capital improvement plan.
Your idea is to fulfill it.
Exactly. Well, your obligation is to fulfill it, according to Kelo.
You can change things as you go. That's your plan. You got to say, here's what we're going to do with the money. You can change your plans if you want to change your plans, but obviously, you don't want to backload the SPOSS money forever.
But at what point did we agree to spend $270,000?
David, I don't, I don't think anybody agreed to spend $270,000. I think I just told you that I was going to get prices together from Cherokee, which would be a lot better than what he said.
Most.
Did I, did I not say that?
When the invoice came in, I think everybody talked about it. She said it was too high, and he said, I think we all agreed it was too high. So, when they went to me.
We can look at that, but that don't mean we're going to have to spend that up there.
No, I think that's a lot, that's way too much.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think, even when it came up, I said it was too much.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not.
I think we were all kind of stunned by that.
We can't even put a bathroom up there either, can we?
I don't know if you can put a bathroom up there at all, to be honest with you. You probably don't have enough, you probably don't have enough space to put your.
Subjects.
Subjects, I don't feel one, because all you would really have would be behind the, the tower, the water tower. So, all right. Any other questions on Pickens Street?
Is there something on the, uh?
No, you don't.
Well, it was just the invoice that was, I don't know if they want to.
So, we're not going to spend anything else up there until we get this from Cherokee County, right?
Yeah.
Well, I have to pay this invoice, because it was, he was hired to come out and do it.
I, I see that. Before we do another invoice with him, we need to approve it with accounts. That's, that's what we're doing. We spent $1,600 for something we can't use.
What do you mean you spent $1,600 for something you can't use?
Well, the price isn't up yet, so what is?
You have a rendering, which you're required to have, and it's cheaper than you can get from other places.
The next time, just run it in front of all of us before we do.
Does Cherokee County not do their?
But obviously, you don't wanna backload the SPOSS money forever.
But at what point did we agree to spend $270,000?
David, I don't, I don't think anybody agreed to spend $270,000. I think I just told you that I was gonna get prices together from Cherokee, which would be a lot better than what he said. Did I, did I not say that?
When the invoice came in, I think everybody talked about it. She said it was too high. He said, I think we all agreed it was too high. So when they went to me.
We can look at that, but I don't think we'll have to spend that up there.
No, I think that's a lot. That's way too much.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think, even when it came up, I said it was too much.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not.
I think we were all kinda stunned by that.
We can't even put a bathroom up there either, can we?
I don't know if you can put a bathroom up there or not, to be honest with you. Probably don't have enough, you probably don't have enough space to put your...
Septic.
Septic, fuel lines. Because all you would really have would be behind the, the tower, the water tower. Any other questions on Pickens Street?
Is there something on the...
No, you don't remember.
Well, it was just the invoice that was, I don't know if they wanna...
So we're not gonna spend anything else up there until we get this from Cherokee County, right?
Yeah.
Well, I have to pay this invoice because it was, he was hired to come out and do it.
I see that. Before we do another invoice with him, we need to approve it with accounts. That's, that's what we're doing. We spent $1,600 for something we can't use.
What do you mean you spent $1,600 for something you can't use?
Well, the price isn't up yet, so what is?
You have a rendering, which you're required to have. And it's cheaper than you can get from other places.
The next time, just run it in front of all of us before we do it.
Does Cherokee County not do the rendering of the park?
They can if we start out with them, yeah. If we start out with them. And they've given us, they've given us all the people that we need to throw at, at our project, so. So do you wanna vote on the, do you wanna vote on the invoice?
Do we need to vote on it or just...
I mean, the...
We're on my priority.
Design is approved.
I mean, everybody knew, we had conversations about him coming back at the meeting with us up there before he did the invoice, or before he did the renderings and stuff.
But we didn't really think about it.
We discussed it in here. They, she was having a meeting with the park, the drawing, the re-design.
It's kind of one of the things we gotta pack it, lock it up.
I disagree. We've, we've been talking about this, this project for a while.
We almost turned it over before we done the rendering, wasn't we? I mean, I didn't know anything about the meeting with him.
He's not gonna come out and not do anything. It's, well, it's like if you have him come out and be, instead of a meeting to start him with rendering, it's not like an introductory meeting. Because he's already, he did the design for the park down here. And there's been other stuff that we've had him do. There's other invoices in there that aren't for that park.
Just let us know the next time before we hand, ask what we're after.
Update on Kennesaw Avenue drainage project. So what I walked, we were on the last meeting, was that I would get with Jerry Cooper to see if he would take a look at our drainage project on Kennesaw Avenue. And, and to partner with us. He agreed to do that. He's, should, I should have an email this week from him with who to contact.
An engineer.
One of his people and an engineer, so. He said they would help us with the bid, the bid packet as well to help draft that document to, so we would be able to reject any bids and all bids for any reason. He said that's on these projects, you need that. He said he would be able to get bids for us. He said he knows enough people that will bid on that project. And you need, need more than one bid to do a project for SPOSS, for that size project. So we have already reviewed and voted on canceling or rejecting the bid from Chatfield. So I will let Chatfield know that, that we'll have to go back and it'll be rebid at some point. Once we get the information from Jerry Cooper's team, then we can meet and you guys can have a look at what he has and go from there. He said you do need to get a civil engineer for the city, but not an environment, an engineer. No, I did not know that Barry was an environmental engineer. He was here when I got here.
Me too.
So.
We did look at website evidence. What you had said is plastered all over it. So, yeah, I'm sure he's great at what he does, but it might not be the best fit for this project.
I don't know how, I don't know how he came by being here, but.
I don't either. Maybe this'll help us get it back down where it's supposed to be. Or budget within.
I did ask about the smooth, smooth board pipe. So go in with that and see if it would save us money, so. Any other questions on Kennesaw Drainage, Avenue Drainage? Discuss and vote on Highway 5 road repair, restripping and fronting. So we talked about it in our last meeting and we had the prices. But we didn't vote because it was a work session, so. Would like to take a look at that. If there's any questions, let's go ahead and get them out and then vote on it.
I sympathize. We looked at work.
Yeah, he is. Can I get a motion to approve the grinding and restripping on Old Highway 5?
Does it matter, like, I haven't really looked at all the numbers here. Is that the total for, just to go over and do the grinding and the repair work?
It's supposed to be average laying, 425 foot of the road, 31 foot wide.
So you go overlay the joints?
So it's a 17 total to do everything correctly. And then we go in and the restripping. The restripping, we voted on that. It was the 12. Not going to be done soon. And then the three or four. And it's not on us anywhere in our plan to do in the next five years. But we need, the L-Med money's there too, so if you could put towards that.
Yeah, we, and we talked about that in the last time. So we've got L-Med from, from this past year.
We have the 30%.
And then we have a 3% match, so it'll cover, that should cover it.
Yeah, and the application for the next one's due towards the end of the year, which was a social program without application.
I make a motion to approve the $70,773 for the entire road.
I'll second.
And grind the bumps.
All in favor? Discuss and vote on repaving Haverson Way. Miranda has our latest, our latest paper on that where they did the road studies, but.
We have on improvement project had a list that it was 12 feet to repaint that road. But I think she may have.
And I think she said it was just under $15,000 is what it was.
And that was due on the Cherokee route.
That's what she said at our last meeting.
You on the way to get the final numbers and vote on it?
It's up to you.
That's up to you. I mean, if it's something we want done right away, go ahead and get it on the books. I would, I would just vote to, if it's under $15,000 to do it. And I'm almost with what she said it was just under. While they're out here, maybe they can do it.
Yeah, that's fine. If it's under $15,000.
I'll make a motion to approve repaving Haverson Way as long as the cost estimate we get back is under $15,000, $15,000 less.
May I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, new business. Vote, discuss and vote on the statewide mutual aid agreement, Council of Attorney.
Fun stuff. This is one of these agreements, basically, you just have to sign it every four years. There's a copy in here, the one that was signed in April of 2016. It's the third page in there. They sent like a list of questions and answers. But it's basically like if something happens, that everybody kinda works together. I asked them if it still applied since we no longer have police department and it doesn't really have anything to do with that. It was just that there's natural disasters, if stuff comes up, they would all work together, more or less.
Is this in addition to the FEMA thing that was signed?
Yeah, and this was done, I think it was when Miranda was still here because she's signed it. And then it's happened another time. Well, this one was done, David, you were here when it was there. It was April of 2016 was when it was signed last. There's like, I don't know, like state of the month, it seems, stuff like that, but everybody.
Jeff, this is something standard that, that all the, that all the cities are doing?
Yes.
Okay. It's just a requirement.
It pops up every four years.
Yeah. Oh my gosh, and just like this, the work, the light and assistance agreement.
May I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Discuss amending the tree ordinance.
We'll turn that one over to Tina. Okay, this is just something that we need to keep on our radar. It's not something we have to do anything about tonight. We did have, it was Evan Howell came in to ask about the possibility of getting a logging permit of property that he has across the street. The second page in has a page, our, our town map. The pink area is the area he owns is between Laurel Lake and Ray Mountain Road. He said that he would not clear anything actually buttoned up to Laurel Lake so there weren't any issues with him. And he may not even end up doing it. So he's not really so much pushing to do it, he was just putting feelers out to know how to go about it. There were a few properties on Ray Mountain that did kinda back up too. But he said a lot of the trees over there were dead. There was beetles and stuff that had gotten and some of them are very tall. And some of it just needs to be cleared up. But it was one of those things that just needs to kinda be on our radar. So if he does wanna pursue it, you know, we kinda have a heads up about it. The problem we found was page 34 of the zoning ordinances. Apparently, it was like an 11-page adoption of tree protection stuff in 2004. But the second page of it specifically lists, there is no timbering of land. No timbering of land is allowed in any zoning district within the city. Which is why, you know, you either need a variance or a waiver, whatever. Asked if it was something they were selling. My understanding was a lot of it is wood that they use the plant to make the pallets and stuff when they send them around. So I don't think that something was being used, you know, as far as something that's being sold. Probably replanting.
I'll talk to him a little bit. David said he could fix us up, so I'm sure where his name is gonna be.
Yeah, well, he came in and, and did, which is why I wanted to put that on there. But it's a neighborhood commercial, which the regulations for neighborhood commercial are in here also. Because Tina's here to talk about some other stuff in the back. And it's the same regulations apply to both. But it's not anything that we have to do anything about right this second. But if he does want to pursue a permit, we just need to know how to go about doing it.
Well, maybe you need to, if you're going to allow that, if it's considered timbering, I guess you might need to change ordinance and have some regulations about it pretty clear. And I think that applies to any, it allows for, you know, clearing in relation to a development project that...
Yeah, well, because that's the first thing I've seen for us.
Or just for timbering. I mean, obviously, you can always get a permit or the dead trees, et cetera. And if you're clear, then that's something that I need to look at.
Well, exactly.
See, basically, what he's talking about is from the higher line north. Like knowing in front of my house, over in the woods.
Yeah.
That's where all the beetles is killing all the trees.
Yeah, he said a bunch of, I just thought, some of it just needs to be cleaned up. This stuff is already diseased or dead or whatever.
If beetles, then all of them will be gone for a long time. Killing them all. I mean, you stand over there every now and then, you can hear one thought. You're over here in the woods.
But I'll have a better idea if it's someone who's wanting to pursue one way or another. But I just wanted it on everybody's radar. Because there's some adjustments in there that probably need to be made as well. Because it's very, very restrictive when you actually read through the entire thing.
Can we give him a variance on that one project instead of doing a blanket thing over the whole city or... Nothing I've ever heard.
I've never had, heard it come up, honestly.
Can you check on that for us? Maybe just do a little ordinance review, see if there's anything in addition to what we have in our zone. I'll do the same thing and see what's fair. And then, you know, the other thing is, is the replanning, whereas what's the, what is the...
I'll ask them. I don't know for sure. It was just, I, my understanding is, he's done it before. Because when he initially came in, he's like, this is gonna be a hassle, but. And so I don't know why it'd be a hassle because we have a fee sheet that says this and that. And then I checked the tree ordinance and it specifically says there's no timbering. So we kinda put the brakes on it. I don't know how.
If it happened before, probably nobody checked that.
Well, it's that or else, well, he needed, he said it was a hassle to get it. So it was one of those, it was, we were kinda jumping through hoops. I just don't know the protocol that was taken at that point. And if it's something that we need to possibly amend under special circumstances or put stipulations in there.
We could probably have some regulations about it. Just allow it on certain tracts of land, and then tracts of land where it is inappropriate to allow it.
Well, I think most of the land around here that that would affect would be their lands anyway. Which I know there's a few parcels in here that are larger that are private residences. So for the most part, it's pertaining to a marble company. So I'll find out if he's going to replant or not. And then we can do a little more research on it. Just kinda keep it on your radar.
Any questions? C, discuss and vote on House Bill 302 resolution. That's the only thing I'm hearing.
Okay, nothing to see. Tim Crather actually had contacted us about it, the fire chief. And asked if our city had passed anything pertaining to this, which was anything I'd really paid attention to. Basically, I just took excerpts from an article that was written in the Gainesville Times about it. Says a Georgia bill that would limit local governments' ability to restrict architecture on homes in their cities or counties. Prohibit local governments from adopting or enforcing ordinances or regulations relating to building design elements on single-family homes or duplexes. Basically, it just stops our ability to control anything that goes on in the city. Most other cities and towns and counties are doing the same thing. And my understanding was that it was just a resolution they were assigned and then sent to the House so they don't pass a bill. It's not going in and changing anything we have in place, making any new rules or regulations. It's just saying, saying that we want to, each city wants to maintain control of what they do and not allow building designs, principles, whatever.
Their concern has been that's not gonna allow government to require proper fire codes and other things in relation to buildings. I think it was pretty broad what was proposed.
It was like they could kinda rebuild a house out of any.
Yeah, they could do whatever they wanted.
Yeah, he's over here nodding like you don't want that.
The other cities we represent have passed a similar resolution.
And it doesn't, like I said, it doesn't change anything that we already have on the books in any way.
Maybe it doesn't change our, it doesn't change any ordinances that we have.
No, it doesn't change any. It's just telling the House that we want to.
You wanna keep walking through it.
Yeah, we want control of our ordinances and everything on.
So if they didn't have cities to voice their opinion, maybe we might get a...
That's what they're having.
I'm getting a motion to vote on the House Bill 302 resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve House Bill 302 resolution.
I'll second.
All in favor? Discuss and vote on the Howell Agreement.
Okay, Evan Howell owns his property across the street. But he has granted the city an easement to have the power poles moved. And as long as the city can show ownership of that parcel, of the right of way, we don't have to pay the $6,000, $8,000 to move the power poles. So in exchange for that, we've let the maintenance guys cut the grass. There's just been questions that are asked. So I asked up to draft an agreement stating we need to maintain it. I think it's for 10 years. And it was in lieu of him granting the easement that saved us so much money. But I wanted something on the books, so if questions are asked, whatever, there's paper to back up what we're doing.
I make a motion and sign and agree.
A second.
All in favor? Discuss and amend the alcohol ordinance.
Yeah, the fire department.
Oh, I didn't point out too far, sorry. Discuss the fire department's third quarter report. I told you I'd be in my closet.
This was another, Tim Crather sent this over. I guess they just do a quarterly report showing what the stats were for calls in Cherokee County and for the city in the house. He just wanted to make sure that everybody had it, so I told him to put it on the agenda. It was just basically a look over and everything was on it.
So Nelson had two fires. EMS incidences was zero. Technical rescues were zero. EMS incidences was 13, and other call services were 11. Totaling 26 calls and 11 ambulance transports.
What was that, truck incident, I guess, Tom? I don't know what that is, online.
Anybody have anything on that? Discuss, discuss amending the alcohol ordinance. I'm just gonna give you that moment. Because you've done all the...
And there's been, a company recently has contacted us that has been in negotiations and, or talks with the property owner of the eight acres that's right outside Laurel Lakes. And they've asked about the possibilities of, you know, what they can put there, what they can't put there. Every commercial has certain things, specific things that are allowed and aren't allowed. It's Tina that's sitting here, so if there's questions, she's here to answer those also. But she had asked about the possibility of amending our alcohol ordinance to allow onsite consumption. If we do allow onsite consumption for beer and wine... If we do allow onsite consumption for beer and wine, for Jack, we do not have to have it on a ballot. If you're going to allow onsite consumption of liquor, it does, it is a ballot question for the next election. This was just kind of opening it up for discussions going forward. We currently have, there is a fee schedule for flooring, so it's likely to have been partially processed, but we, our current ordinances do not allow onsite consumption. And the zoning for area commercials behind that too. There's a few pages that come.
That zoning allows it eating and drinking establishment, but there's just nothing that made it clear that that could or would include onsite consumption of beer and wine.
Yeah.
Which is probably normal for a restaurant to do.
They got it all for scrawching.
Do it.
It's down at Alton Scrawching, both places.
With pizza place and that, excellent place.
So, you would just need to make that a little clearer. You do have a fee schedule, so it's anticipated at some point, but it just not, doesn't look like it's totally clear that that would be allowed, so you just need to have that in your alcohol ordinance if you decided to allow a restaurant to have onsite beer and wine. It's different if you start talking about liquor.
And if y'all have questions, I figure it's better to get it from a horse's mouth than from the.
What kind of businesses are going to be?
The, to Tina's question. Hi, come on, Tina Chambers. We have a contract on that eight acres, and I was down at Environmental Health today with Cherokee County, and the protest didn't come back all that great in our favor for everything that we had planned to go out there. So, we have to be very specific as far as the businesses that we can try to draw in. We still have a daycare on the table. The septic system will cost us a lot more to put the daycare and the dosing system. We have to rearrange where we thought we could build the buildings, because we have very little leachable land to use. So, the alcohol ordinance, if we could broaden that, would definitely give us leeway as far as the types of businesses we could bring to that complex for trying to build an antique slash vendor slash craft mall, like indoor shopping area, possibly a daycare. We were looking at sort of a restaurant, maybe like a morning to lunch, the meat and two, three country type of cooking place, and then also something a little more evening related. We would like to be able to have some sort of a beer and wine, like tin roof bottle shop type place. There's possibly going to be an event center, depending on septic, we may have to cut some of the higher flow businesses and bring in some other things, so if we have an event center, we'd like to do catering with a wedding or something like that, so obviously, we would want some onsite consumption there. So, if we could open up, if we wanted to do a tent event, or like a flea market type thing, and have a beer and rots truck, everything's so limited right now with the septic, that if we could open it up some other avenues and give us some more options to bring some more money to, and it's located just inside the city limits of Nelson, so Nelson would benefit from, not just Cherokee County, but Nelson would benefit from bringing people a little bit further north, instead of them all hanging out in ball ground. So, that's where I'm at. So, the faster you can vote on it, the faster I can close the deal.
I'll bring Johnson Jasper's burning down.
Really? Isn't that the truth? Does anybody have any questions?
How much food?
Thank you, thank you.
How much food are you talking, I mean, relation to percentage of alcohol in food? What are you going to try to do on that?
Well, if, if we have a restaurant, obviously, it would be, we were looking at kind of like Marlowe's Tavern, or there's kind of a barbecue joint down off the Hickory Flat, I spoke with that owner, he's looking to move another location this way. And they have beer, liquor, and wine at a small bar, and they mostly do wings and pizza and just all kinds of variety of sandwiches, fish dinners, all kinds of stuff like that. So, it would just be a basic restaurant.
When that septic system more for a restaurant to do is like that area?
It's very similar, and the way our land is laid out over there, and the way the slopes are and stuff, depending on how I can place it, I might get either a restaurant or a daycare or, so I have to be very careful if I get to move forward with this.
Did they give you any reason why it didn't perk so well, it being red clay?
There's a lot of rock. They said there's a lot of rock, and they said at some point when it had been cut, they kind of damaged the land at some point, which I guess moved where the good land would have been, it kind of cut it off and put it someplace else, so that made that bad land. And unfortunately, the good land for the septic system is all the flat land that looks like if you were to drive by it, where you're like, oh, I could put a big, pretty building right there. No, you can't, because that's where the good land is for the leaching. So, by, I have to move parking lots and roadways and have a lot more grassland than I thought I was going to have to have, but it's, it's still doable. I just need to make sure that I have enough options to make it profitable for us and for the city to move forward with it.
How did you happen to choose that little piece of land there?
I've driven past it for about 10 years, back and forth, and now I kind of guess I've figured out why nobody's bought it before, but I think there's some hurdles that I can probably jump, that being restricted neighborhood commercial, I can only do so much, the septic system can only do so much, so I was just trying to open up some other ordinances to give me some more leeway to try to bring kind of a, a little bit more to the area.
Tina, is your decision on, on what you put there based on what the council decides?
It's kind of heavy on it, just because of all of the other things that are closing in on it. It's not, I don't have a whole lot of trade-offs at this point. We're looking to build it kind of in an old-fashioned style, wraparound porch, rocking chairs, brick fronts, not all metal buildings, but, you know, rusty tin, and we're trying to make it look like it's been there for 100 years, but keep it up and keep it really nice. It'll be landscaped, there'll be an entrance, and it is right when you come in City of Nelson, you pass the welcome City of Nelson sign, and it's the land right there to the left. So, we're hopeful.
Also, any questions?
I'd rather know for sure what you're putting there before I hope to approve alcohol consumption of that, I mean, what percentage?
Most cities require there to be, I say most cities, some cities allow straight-up bars, not any cities that we deal with, they all have a food requirement. I think the percentages differ, but you can require that. If you, if you decide to allow the possibility of a restaurant, you can guarantee that it is a restaurant. I think they're required to report that, so it remains consistent.
They're required to sell more food than they do alcohol.
Yeah, I don't know what the percentages are in all the springs, but they do have them.
The way the onsite restriction is now, though, we couldn't even do like, like a wine and cheese event, you know, you can't even keep, there isn't, low scale, you can't, I don't want a bar. There's not going to be, you know, like a Rocco's or anything like that down there, but you can't even have a wedding, or an outdoor tent event, or a wine and cheese evening in the antique mall, or anything like that as of right now, which are all draws for people to come spend money in the retail center. So, without that draw, and not bringing the business to the area, they're all just going to go somewhere else and do it. So.
Can you?
I can send you an example, I mean, we just did one for Talking Rock, included liquor as well, because they put that on the ballot, but I can send you that to look at as just an example of the kind of things that they include.
Requiring food would also cut down on a lot of it, too. Like, because if you, if you have a wedding, and you just want to do like a dessert and wine type of wedding or something, if you require it to be catered, then those people aren't going to come there.
Special, special events are usually treated differently, so you can have different rules for a special event than you, than you live for a restaurant, and, you know, the special event venues don't have a specific food requirement, I don't think.
Yeah.
I mean, my concern, we don't have a place for it or nothing, and people drinking on the road, I'm, I'm not for it myself, but I'd rather come to a vote instead of five people deciding what we do.
I'll send you that, so you can look at it. Just so you can see what I'm looking for.
Well, I'm definitely not for people drinking and driving either.
Right.
And it's not to promote that, but like I say, if we don't, if we don't open up the possibilities in the city of Nelson, and everybody's just going to go to ball ground and do it, and they could still drink and drive through the city of Nelson when they leave, I mean, that's what we have him for, is just stop that.
I don't want it, okay, just to have it here.
Gotcha.
Is it something that could be put on the ballot, whether it's for people who are rich or poor, or something?
You can't put a question unless you have to.
Okay.
You can't just ask, you can't just take a poll.
Yeah, and that's what it was just.
So, tell us that more. How would that work? You said you can't just ask a question, how would that work?
Well, you can ask a question some other way, you can't put it on the ballot.
You can't put it on the ballot if it's not required.
You could. You can say, "Well, I have alcohol." Literally, for leverage, require generally to put it on a ballot, literally. Why, goodness generally, actually backed, I think some of the defensive laws allowed in the county that you're talking about, that establishes, I think, so you're maybe pickings to onsite consumption of beer and wine, if it's required to be on the ballot. It might be different for package sales, and different for liquor, but.
If it's on the ballot, does that mean that the people of the city of Nelson get to vote for it as well? Yeah. Instead of it just being?
That's why liquor's required to be.
Yeah, but they won't let us put it on there for beer and wine, that's what I'm asking.
You can't just ask, and you can poll your citizens any other way you want to. You just can't put it on the ballot now.
Yeah. So, and how often is the ballot?
The election's every two years. Unless there's another one that comes up. Well, it's like if there's a special election held where the county's going to be here anyway.
Right.
You can tag along with it.
I think the next one could be the primary in the spring.
Yeah.
The next time you could put anything on the ballot.
Is there a system in place to have the citizens vote, so that the council would have a feeling for what the area is wanting or not wanting? Is there?
Pretty good.
Is that part of?
Y'all have had public hearings and asked people how they expressed their feelings about those before.
Yeah, we could do it.
Can we post it on our website?
We can.
And we can do a public hearing where we actually.
I just don't want to be the one to make the decision.
I understand that.
Because I don't drink, and.
Yeah, no, I get it.
I mean, we can post the signs everywhere and then have it very well advertised, and then have the hearing here, so you can get as much of a consensus as possible.
I don't believe it, but I'd sure be.
See, this is the, that's the thing, is that hearing is. That's what the transcript, yeah, I swear, that it's literally not the same. Okay.
Maybe that's all in the internet.
Yeah, and that's great.
Yeah. How do you have to say that? It might be on the ballot. Yeah, so we've, we've held it down the other side.
That's what I was trying to say about.
Three times.
Yeah.
Everybody has. It's going to be three times.
I'll bet a ton that it happens.
It might have been noted on the board, because if that could sell, you would have had.
We have, it's in that.
We'll get, I'll get, we'll get all the information, get it back out. Something that we want to do, then we'll do it.
It's pretty sensitive. It's a, 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 it's Yeah, exactly, well, they said it hadn't been, they haven't had that taken, I think it was like 2015 or something, so it was a whole bunch that it caught up, basically. I have the ones these, in a folder on the desk.
I've got everything I've ever drafted, and I've sent all those.
Well, Miranda just said anytime we pass one, I scanned it in and sent it to them, so they have a copy of it. But there were some, there was one about public speaking or something, that it never.
I prepared it, but it didn't get.
I dug through the minutes and it kept getting pushed off, meaning, 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 and it just disappeared.
What Miranda has suggested was that we do a, and I think she's already implemented it back there, but it's a binder, and you, every time we do one, we put a copy in there as well as citizens.
I usually put one in the meeting, in the minutes, I think.
So it's in multiple places, but there's, she was implementing a book that actually had all of our updated ordinances.
Yeah, and there's a copy of it in there.
So if like, ever a woman has a thing, or ever an update late, it just, look, this is kind of accumulated over the past.
I didn't know it had been done. Well, I think there was one from either 14 or 15 that we could never find in a past, so, hopefully we give those more frequently instead of. But, anyway, the emails are in there from one of our mock and asker about what was what. So, anyway, I'll make a motion to approve a municipal invoice.
I guess, I think.
I'll say it.
How about that? You know, speaking, okay, how about that?
And this was just to discuss what everybody wants to do for the upcoming holidays, and for the, if we're doing a dinner, or whatever, this year, so we kinda have things moving in, or discussing.
Third thing on Friday, that big time, six.
December?
Yeah. It's the same way.
But that was for a dinner?
Okay, are we going to do our holiday event for the city again this year?
Yes.
What are we, are we doing, maybe you're gonna have what stuff we had?
I need to really, I think we can, but we only have, we have two weeks, once we get together, try to get some planning together, get what James and CD get Santa Claus again, and we'll see what we can do and put something together. So y'all be thinking about it, if you wanna do a movie, Kelsey can get a, she can get the same thing, if you wanna show, like a movie down there for the kids, because it gets dark early, we wanted to show The Grinch or something like that, we could do that and have hamburgers and hot dogs, and gonna get, I'll do, and try to do the stuff from Home Depot again, where the kids can build a toy, and.
Some we still have some.
Let's, let's do it in the daylight this time.
Start it early, and then you can have a movie.
From your coat, or big coat.
Yeah. You can do it as an afternoon thing. Well, you can start it like at two, and then just had whatever, and then if you want to stay for the movie, you could start, it'll be dark, it'll be five o'clock, and I'm sure.
If anybody wants to help out with the holiday event, please feel free to reach out to me.
Any council member that wants to wear a Grinch outfit?
Yeah, or Santa Claus.
I'm opting out of that.
I think I can have an elf outfit.
I told Jacy would be a great Grinch. Hey, you can get your body.
I think we should all have to wear costumes, some other people could take what we wear, except me, I'm opting out.
I do enjoy doing this, because it's a good way to give back to our community, and it's a, it's a good way to let our, our citizens in full feet together, so.
We need to pick a date for that, too.
Yeah, we will, let's, let's, do we want to do that now, or do we want to go to the next meeting?
Yeah, I've got no what day, I'll schedule Santa Claus.
Six and the 13th is Friday.
Well, the 13th, if you're wanting to do dinner that day, it wouldn't work to do it.
Okay.
The Saturday, remember?
I don't think so, that's a side, that should be a side.
Yes, it's a side.
Yeah, that's like right now, but, it's like, well, we don't really try to plan it.
That's the parade in Jasper, too.
Yeah, so either the, we have, we have the 20, we have the 14th is really the only available day, unless y'all, I don't think anybody wants to go on the 21st, so the 14th.
I'll give it up.
I'd be glad with me.
Okay, discuss our package being ready by Wednesday, the week before. Is there, is that, I mean, is it something you want to vote on, or do you just want, or you request it? I'm pretty sure she.
I was just gonna vote, to make it like a normal filing that we've done, ever made, scheduled, made, whatever.
I mean, like, so it steps in there, which is.
And it now has a problem doing it, so, you want to vote on it, go ahead and make a motion.
To make a motion, we just make it a regular occurrence, that whoever wins today will come pick our folder up, with the agenda and agenda packet, and minutes need an approval. I'll say it.
Okay, so, anything you want, in all favor? You know, I'm just thinking. Alright, executive session. I'd like a motion to adjourn.
I'll say it.
All in favor? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I think I mentioned. Yeah, no, but what did you tell them, come back and adjourn the executive session?
No, yeah.
I think I mentioned adjourned.
You can say.
It's my birthday, Bill.
I got it. unanimous. And now, public appearance, anybody have anything they'd like to address the council, which I like? Yes, ma'am? Please come up, state your name and your bad dress, and all that good footsoffers.
I'm not giving you a lot. Everybody knows me, I'm Penny Thacker.
Yes, ma'am.
Sat here for eight years, with Mr. Jeff and Mr. Wayne, too. Bless your heart. No, I do have a couple of things to say, and this is kind of supporting you, you ladies. We always picked our packets up on Friday, that gave us the weekend, Monday, and we always come in 6:30 and talk amongst us, and got, I mean, we wasted, y'all wasted 20 minutes tonight, going over what should have already been, but. Do your homework, come earlier than we. And the other things I do have, Mayor, we, the county has signed street ordinances for big trucks. Reddiss Mountain is one of their streets that's on that list of no trucks on. Could we please follow up with that? We have such big trucks on our road that don't know how to stop at the stop sign.
Thank you.
They run over everybody's yards, we've had bush taken out, how many mailboxes? Several mailboxes, because they're too big to come on our street, so if you would, please, just, you know, check on the no trucks on Reddiss Mountain, off of Pickens Street.
I've heard of that.
And I'm sorry, I do live on 6891 Pickens Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is it, hang on, is a truck ordinance for Reddiss not in there, or is it for Pickens Street?
It's Reddiss Mountain, but it has, you know, they have to come Pickens Street to get to Reddiss Mountain, which.
I just wanted to know what I'm looking up.
Oh, yes. Speedbreakers, I hear we have them.
We do, they're on my list of places to mark, because the guys won't put them out until we mark the locations.
Come down, come down tomorrow, and we, I just, it's on our list, so we have just talked about it, and I have meetings last week that prevented it, so.
You just, oh, yeah, Pickens Street, maybe on that one?
We're setting them in front of stop signs, like coming up, so if you, you get a warning for your stop sign, and there's been requests, it was the dean that requested one over off of North Avenue, people are using it as a cut through to avoid the one on Blue Ridge. We've had someone actually request another one on Blue Ridge, I think a little closer to the top, because the kids tend to play right in that area. Somebody, I read on Facebook the other day, requested one on, I believe they called it Pull Tide, it's not that I'm, come from Cherokee Avenue, which, I don't know the old name, so it's, there's been several people that have requested them in other places, and, so it is on our to do list, we do have them, it's just getting them marked, because they won't, they will not put them out until we mark where they're going.
I understand. And, James, you and I had talked one day a while back about getting a camera and a three-way stop facing, and further enough back where it's gonna face the stop signs and the garden's truck.
Yeah.
We have it, and it probably needs to be moved, we do, and we were actually talking about that earlier today, and, to have it relocated somewhere else, because it's been the same place for a long time.
Yeah, I meant the church.
It did help, though, I mean, we get to cut down some of the drug activity up there, I've gone and set myself, so.
And, and see, and getting back to that Pickens project, the basketball goal, we had, James and I were, we had the one that had that installed, right, two days later, either the chains, the gates were off, the rims were broken, the balls go out in the street, kids run after the balls. I personally would rather see you spend the money somewhere else and not even have that there, because the kids don't appreciate them. Paid it for the church members to park there, if we've got that much money just to give away, to spend, I'm sure they would really appreciate the paid parking.
Thank you, Penny.
Are we any closer to getting a place back in town?
As of now, you don't have the budget for it, but like what Tina was talking about earlier, that could be good revenue sources.
It could be.
Someone has actually approached me about possibly annexing some property into the city, but it's nothing that's firm or written in stone, kind of thing yet, but we'd have to have additional revenue to, the budget to potentially allow it up.
So the problem was, and I know you weren't here, but we, we explained it a couple times, we did an analysis on it, and the budget's just a little over $400,000 when all the money comes in, so, if you spend $35,000 to $40,000 on the chief, who really can't respond to domestic violence, they can't respond to drugs, you have to call the county for those, and he has to have so many hours in, in the office just sitting, so, and then, once you train him, that's a 12, that's $12,000 additional on top of it, then you have to insure him, which is quite a bit, upkeep on vehicles, gas, you've got, you've got $100,000 of a $400,000 budget.
We've done it all, have it, we've done it all.
And you know, they're not gonna stay, so the ones that we have, have gone in either direction, making $10,000 to $15,000 more.
They get the training here.
Oh, yeah, we, we pay the train, then they have.
There's things that they're looking at, that would help, because you get so much income off of, if it's beer and wine, you get so much off the taxes off of alcohol, that beer and wine, you, you know, if somebody like Evan had talked maybe about subdivision at some point here in the future, if we had additional revenue come in like that, then we could definitely do something like that, just to have somebody here that could respond to setting up where, where our road stops are and things like that, so.
Is Miranda in the line?
She is, she's, she's still working behind the scenes, for those of you don't know.
The street light that's up at the last three-way stop, can we see if I'm getting it replaced?
North that, the one that's by Marsha Heaton's?
No, on the next three-way, the very last one going north.
I thought we just had a caller for that one. Because we just had one added across the street there, is the one that's at that intersection out?
That's my sister that lives there.
Is that a black hole, like a, because I think I called in the number on that one, whenever I did the one next to Ms. Cagle, and they were supposed to do, so if it's not that.
We don't even have it, I just haven't seen it in the last couple of days.
I'll check it.
See, and I, and I've gotta say this, I got my feelings hurt today, and I got my heart hurt yesterday, we, Troy and I had been out of town for the weekend, and we come back in, and we come down our street, and one of our ex-candidate for council seat was blowing his leaves out in the street, then over into the pavilion, so we went home, unloaded the refrigerated stuff, and I went back up there and took pictures of it, and I emailed.
There's a letter being sent out tomorrow, I have pictures and everything, too.
But, what I got the feeling I heard about was, the city sent the guys up there today to clean the mess up.
I didn't send them up there, Ricky had already gone out there, because they had actually cleaned everything up Thursday, Friday.
They cleared it up Friday.
Yeah.
No, no, they did say that you told them.
Oh, I know, but they went in and just.
You told them that there was a complaint.
Yeah.
They took off three bucket loads of leaves.
And that's a lead.
That you blew out in the street yesterday. We don't do that around here, we're family here, we're not from California, so if that's the way you need to be, you need to go somewhere else. Thank my job, it not me.
You know what, but what you didn't see, because we waited, and but then we went, we didn't.
Yeah, you saw me taking pictures of you.
But, no, but we weren't done, and we went and cleaned, and if you look in my garage prior to that, I've got five bags of leaves that I've already raked up.
You did not go over there and pick them up?
We did, we actually did after, but, after you left, we did.
What, how did the guys go pick up three bucket?
They didn't, whoa, whoa.
Well, I'm arguing with them, I'm arguing with you.
Excuse me, that's it.
Yeah.
That is that.
Your leaves, you clean your own leaves up.
We're done with that.
It's not the city's place.
Anything else to say?
I, other than y'all have done a great job, and wish you all luck doing this job, because it's not fun.
It's not easy, and then I'll, I'll be honest, it's not easy for anybody on this council, but, but at the end of the day, regardless of where we're from, right?
No, both.
We're still, we're still, we still are citizens in one town.
We are, but you know, I remember the very first time I ever saw this vehicle, he almost rear-ended me, speeding up my street.
I understand.
So, and there, you know, if we have these speedbreakers, maybe us another set further down Pickens Street, and the curb.
And you will, so you'll have them at both ends of the, both ends.
You're talking about further down.
Like, New Nelson's, y'all okay with putting one down there? I've had several complaints by cars flying around there, there's a guy there who's lost his mailbox about four times.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I think he just lost it. It's just, the, the angle is right there, it's right on the road.
Well, cars go way too fast, and then they run out.
Well, they do. Okay, thanks for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Alright, anybody else? I'm on limits, you do about two minutes, so. Talks fast.
There's one, there's one city ordinance that's not, he had been to go, he got lost along the way somewhere, land disturbance order ordinance, there's one in there, but it's been superseded, and been done.
Do you know when that one was passed?
2004, probably, it's been updated at least twice.
Okay, do you have a copy of that?
There's one in the office, excuse me.
Think the last one was 2004?
The first one, first one.
You think it's been amended since?
It's been, it was amended about three or four years ago, because there's a, there's a model ordinance provided by the state, and when the state makes changes, they put the model ordinance online, then the cities take that and put their unique addresses and so forth.
Yeah, because if it were something like that, I might not, I wouldn't have it in my database, if I didn't draft it.
So if you can provide something like that, I want, I mean, I know you keep everything.
Was it voted on?
If you go deep through one of your.
Just to know there, if you spend it on that, you can find it in amendments.
Yeah, it was.
Please make it easy for me tomorrow.
Anyway. I'll do whatever, I can do this, just you know.
Thank you.
I think it would, we've talked about this before, but I think it would revisit, I think it would be a good idea to maybe do a little mini public appearance before the agenda, so that people who have a particular, something they would like to input to the council before you discuss and move on.
We talked about that a couple of times, council, how do you guys feel about that?
That was actually the ordinance that Jeff sent me, that was never passed, was one that had been placed.
Did it move at the start of the meeting?
They, yeah, it was to move the public appearance up.
It would be an addition, it would still, it would still be a, a, where you could talk about whatever you want to, but at the beginning of the meeting, a lot of people come with something particularly on their mind, they heard about, that's going on, and you don't get a chance to say anything until it's already a done deal, so, I'm just asking, limited to only things that are on the agenda for two, three minutes, max.
You all good with that?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yes.
That's true.
I think you would, if you want to do that in the seventh ultimate, we need to vote on, because I think.
You want me, I can find it.
I think it's in the ordinance, it's the order in the meeting, so.
That other ordinance that you sent, because I think that's what it was, that it was like from into 2015 into 2016, it was back and forth on the agenda, and never.
Add it to the next meeting, something, just gonna copy that further back, and then we can vote on it now. It won't be, it won't be this coming meeting, Mark, for December, but for January, we'll vote on it in December. Anything else?
I would like to chastise you a little bit, I think the meeting kinda got out of hand back there when all the discussion took over.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'd like to see you keep control.
Yes, sir.
So that you have to recognize the people that are talking, instead of just in a zoo, and then all of us start talking to each other.
Yes, sir.
It's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
It would help me to understand what's going on.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you, Mark, I appreciate it. Yes, sir?
I just want to respond to you, I designed a brand new logo for the city, I designed a new logo for the, for the council, for the official part, the city, I've participated in every event since I've moved here, I started movies in the park.
I started movies in the park, I'm donating a new website, have you ever thanked me for that? We're fixing up a lot of homes. Have you ever thanked me for that?
Are you doing it legally?
Am I doing it legally? You are ass.
Do you have permits on everything?
Yes, we do.
You're an ungrateful bitch.
Hey, hey, hey. Don't, don't, hey, wait a minute, hey, hey, hey.
Hey, don't call them.
I didn't hear, see that back ass phone, you know? I might give it away, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying. You're the only one that built that house, though.
Hey, no, Jay, no, Jay. I'm thinking about somebody in the meeting.
Everything is done legally, y'all, you know, like.
Get the one, figure it out, man, all of it.
I just say something.
I make sure I say something.
Every bitch, everything is legal, has been done.
I just want to say, I was born, I've been here 72 years.
I promise you, yeah.
And all of this going on.
Did you get a permit for your building, now, now?
I love this.
Yes, I do.
I don't know, nothing nobody's doing.
Be posted.